Good evening, everyone. I apologize, we're getting started a little late. We had an executive session earlier to discuss some internal personnel matters and pending litigation. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and -- Bear with us. Okay, great. Let's go on with the Pledge of Allegiance, then. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Virginia, would you take a roll call, please? Is Virginia there? Oh.
Hello?
Hello, Virginia. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Wonderful.
We're ready to start the meeting, Virginia. Could you -- it starts with a roll call.
Yes, absolutely. Mayor Anderson?
Sure.
Councilman Mayurhard?
Here. Here.
Councilman Luthin?
Here.
Councilman Minett?
Here.
Councilwoman Murray?
Here.
Councilman Paul?
Here.
Councilman Robinson?
Here.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Here.
Our borough solicitor?
Here.
Is it Scott Holbert?
Adam.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Adam Flager.
All right, our borough manager, thank you very much.
Thank you, Virginia. We begin tonight's meeting with a presentation by Amtrak. So let me introduce you to Stanamir Voikov, who is going to tell us about the replacement of the Amtrak Bridge over Washington Street. Mr. Voikov.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. I'll start with a brief introduction. I'm Stan Voikov.
Stan, could you pick up the mic and be closely into it, please?
Sure, I'll pick it up. Can you hear me better now?
There you go, thank you.
Thank you all for having us here tonight. I'll start with a brief introduction. I'm Stan Voikov, project manager for the project. Peter Fusco, the project director. Jane Brophy, government affairs from Amtrak, and our consultant Phil Thompson from H&amp;H. Thanks, please, next slide. On this slide, just as a brief introduction on who the owner is and also who operates on this bridge, there are several other train companies, Septa, New Jersey Transit, and other railroads that also use the bridge. So even though it's Amtrak-owned, other companies use it as well. So let's get right to it. The project purpose is to replace Washington Street Bridge between Green Street and East Philadelphia Street. And since the bridge is 120 years old, it's way past the time of replacement. So we would like to replace it as soon as possible. And in order to do that, we would like to ask if we could close the street permanently during the duration of the construction project and afterwards as well. This new bridge will accommodate our new state-of-the-art trains and improve our ride quality throughout the northeast corridor network. The new bridge will be a ballasted deck bridge so that the ride will be a lot smoother and also will be a lot less noisy than it is now. These are some photos of what the bridge currently looks like. As you can see, it's 120 years old. It features a center pier and also columns on either side of the sidewalk. In this old-school, early 1900s design, open deck bridges were the norm. Now we have ballasted deck bridges and, of course, going back to ride quality and reduction in noise. So as part of the new proposed bridge and the conversion of Washington Street into a pedestrian walkway or a bicycle way, our anticipation is we'll be able to match the arched fire duct just to the east of it. So it's going to aesthetically improve the area. Also, we'll be able to improve pedestrian safety and remove the center pier columns and the columns on the sidewalks as well. So it's going to be an open area where you can just walk through and connect between the two sides of the railroad. And the biggest point of having the street closed is the compacted construction schedule associated with the permanent closure. Here we have a few cross-sections for everyone to see what the bridge may look like. It's just the rendering. There's opportunity to further improve the design if needed, however, that's how we're envisioning it at this point if the street is permanently closed. And our goal is to be able to connect the community from one side of the tracks to the other. As you can see on the map, the red dot represents where the project site is. The area shaded in pink on the bottom represents the residential area, and the area up on top is the commercial area. A potential closure of the street will allow for pedestrians to cross easily between the residential areas and the commercial areas of the town. Also, it's going to be -- it's going to connect the green spaces on either side of Route 1 and improve pedestrian safety and circulation throughout the neighborhood. Additionally, as a dog owner and somebody who takes his dog to the park, having access to the dog run, it's a big selling point, in my opinion, and access to the riverfront where you can walk along. As part of the analysis that we performed, of all options to replace the bridge, our consultant H&amp;H completed a detailed traffic impact analysis on what the actual impacts are if the street does get closed permanently. According to the data counts or the traffic counts, there's roughly 56 cars an hour during the weekday, which is less than a car a minute. And without speaking in engineering, in too much engineering lingo, the level of service would stay roughly the same, and there's no real degradation on the side streets either Pennsylvania or South Delmore by rerouting the traffic from Washington Street. So overall, based on our analysis so far, we do not project any negative impacts on the surrounding community due to the permanent closure of the street for vehicular traffic. That's all I have. This is another zoom-in rendering of what the potential closure would look like.
I have some questions.
Sure.
So you're saying that there's going to be no impact. What happens when the river floods and Delmore Avenue is flooding and so is Pennsylvania Avenue?
So you want to answer this? We're yet to do a hydraulic analysis or drainage design since we're in concept study phase right now. But if Delmar and Pennsylvania Avenue are flooded, I think Washington would be flooded also?
That doesn't really happen. It's mostly Pennsylvania Avenue and Delmore Avenue that flood.
Pennsylvania Avenue floods because there's supposedly a drainage pipe that runs from down to the river. And our previous borough manager told us that if we were township, the state would clean it out. But since we're a borough, we have to clean it out, and we don't have any idea how much it would cost to clean that out. So when it rains or hard, that's just a puddle there. And then if the water comes up on Delmore, like during high tide with, say, in the spring with a lot of snow upstate, if that water comes up on Delmore, there'd be...
And where does truck traffic get rerouted to?
Is that microphone on?
Yeah.
Okay. I have an air vent right here, and I'm having a real difficult time hearing.
No problem.
Hold it loud and talk like you mean it.
Where does this truck traffic get rerouted to both Pennsylvania and South Delmore flood?
Tyburn Road to Route 1 to 13 to Tyburn Road, all the way around.
Got you. So they do not get rerouted through Washington?
Say again?
They do not get rerouted through Washington?
No, because the bridge is -- it's, what is it, a 12-6 bridge now?
Yeah.
So like a fire truck or an ambulance can get under there, but a tractor trailer can't.
So I also have one other question. So I'm assuming you're going to...
Can I finish your last question?
Oh, sure.
So we have -- we did a traffic study for closure of Pennsylvania Avenue. We did a closure detour study for Washington Street, and we did a combined contingency detour. We could go back and look with approval of this, or at least I guess a positive response for this, to look at a closure of Delmar, Washington, and Pennsylvania and see what the level of service degradation would be and what the alternative routes would be. So that's something we could offer during design.
So my other question is, so I'm assuming you're going to have to do the same thing on Pennsylvania Avenue because that bridge is just as bad as the one on Washington Street?
That's correct.
So are you going to recommend closing Pennsylvania Avenue?
No. Pennsylvania Avenue will stay as is, and our goal is to be able to slightly improve the under clearance for that road. So at this moment, we have no plans of -- at this moment, we have no plans of proposing to close Pennsylvania Avenue.
Are you going to lower the clearance?
Potentially. We're still in the design phase. We truly do not have -- we're not advancing anything further until we know what we're going to do with Washington as the bridge that needs the immediate attention at this point.
So if we don't go with this plan of closing Washington Street, what are the plans just to keep the road as is and do the plan, but just the road's not going to get closed?
Correct. It's going to be a phased approach, very disruptive, and the biggest negative to it is that Washington Street does have a lot of major utilities going under it. So for us to be able to complete the new bridge foundations, we will have to dig up a lot of the utilities in the area and potentially reroute them and depress them further into the roadway so that they need proper clearances.
Pennsylvania Avenue has that same problem?
Correct.
Okay. So if we don't go with closing the bridge, do you have any intentions of making that area look a little nicer for the residents, fixing the fences, picking up the trash, just making it look nicer for the people that live on Green Street and Philadelphia avenues?
So our intention is, regardless of if we close or not, to whatever the area, immediate area of impact is, for us to be able to, once we leave, to beautify in a way, put a high-security fence, or just make it better than it is now. So that is our goal, yes.
Okay.
Not as extensive as it would be if we were to close the street, but yes.
My concern is that there's only three streets that, without going the long way around, there are only three streets, Delmore, Washington, and Pennsylvania, that connect the lower part of Morrisville to the other part of Morrisville. If you close one of those and there is a flood and there's an emergency situation, the residents in the first ward are going to have a problem.
I understand.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, Ms. Sherlock, go ahead.
I'd just like to comment, when we have real deluge of rain, that underneath that bridge floods. So we're talking about, you know, Pennsylvania Avenue, Delmore Avenue flooding, but Washington Street, under the bridge floods to a point where people can't go through. And I have a question with the design. You have on the left, you see it's a bit of a cutout, and you're calling it the wing wall beyond, but it almost looks like it's a second entrance of some sort. So is it just a bit of a cutout or...
Which page?
Five. Five? Okay. Yeah, to the left, almost to the left of where those two people are depicted. I'm sorry.
Entrance? No, we do not foresee an entrance on the top left from here.
Yeah, so what is -- why is that cutout? On your design, it says it's a wing -- you're saying it is, it's a wing wall?
Yes, so wing wall...
What does that mean?
That is, we have the engineer record, he can explain what the wing wall in engineering terms is, but it's just a part of the bridge. So it's the wall that extends longitudinally along with the railroad, and it retains the ballast, the embankment of the river.
Okay, but there's, I mean, but it looks like the grass goes already back to the inside it. So I'm just wondering if it's...
I'm not sure.
Am I explaining this correctly? Not really?
I'm just not sure exactly what you mean.
Can I just point?
You can, yeah. And I'll come join you.
So it's that, see how the grass goes all the way around into that little area?
Yeah, so it's, there's a fence. That's the security fence that you see there, and then there's greenery around the inside and around the front of the fence. But the wing wall's the concrete wall that you see that extends beyond...
So there's a fence.
On the backside of that. There's a fence.
There's a fence there, okay.
Security fence and a wall.
Thank you.
And it's a rendering, so the true design of where that wall would be, how long the wall would be, it's all very conceptual at this point.
Okay.
So if you were to replace this bridge for vehicular traffic, it would be a completely different design. Okay.
Well, this is just a conceptual render?
Right. No, it's actually a really, like, it's a really nice-looking bridge, but see, that's my question was that, like, if you built a bridge like this and then just took these poles out of the ground, then the cars could go back and forth, but it doesn't look like it's going to be big enough for cars to go through.
Phil, you want to... So it would be at reduced clearance? So we would definitely be reducing the clearance for the roadway? I don't know what trucks you're bringing through.
You're saying reduce clearance, up all that, reduce and reduce, even lower the road?
No, not necessarily. With this alternative, we wouldn't necessarily have to... Right, even with the other alternative, we wouldn't have to lower the roadway if we could lower the clearance. If we could reduce the clearance on the roadway, we could...
Right, that sounds like a still right story. If you reduce the clearance, you have to lower the road, in other words, it's going to stay the same, the relative same height.
Right, so it's just, we would either lower the roadway to maintain the existing dimension...
Right.
Or reduce that dimension with approval. And that would be...
If you want to lower, you could get it to the clearance to be where it is now, and even if you could increase the...
And what Stan had spoken to before, there's drainage pipes there.
Absolutely.
The amount that we have to lower the roadway would impact those drainage pipes. That would impact, we'd have to chase the drainage to the river, and I think we talked about it before. So when you lower the pipe there, the end of the pipe is now higher than it used to be. Or this end of the pipe went down, that end of the pipe is still up, and you got to chase it all the way out to the river.
So explain to me one more time, why is it that you can't do the same thing on Pennsylvania Avenue? We have a truck chop problem in town, and this would be very helpful if you were to find a way to lower the clearance on Pennsylvania Avenue and make the trucks go the route they're supposed to, which is to Tyburn Road?
I can speak to that. We have not advanced the design that far out. We're still in the planning phase. Washington Street is the priority at the moment to replace the bridge. Once we have a solid plan on where we're going with Washington, we'll begin Pennsylvania as well.
I know, but they should be done really concurrently because the two roads are parallel to each other. So we're going to make a decision on one road, and then we're going to be tied to a second decision. But if we had what the two roads together would be, it would be a much easier decision for the borough to make.
Agreed.
Hold on, Stan. I apologize. I can speak loud enough everybody can hear me.
No.
No, you don't.
The room can hear you, but we can't on the television.
Understood. The reason why it can't go concurrently is it's a funding issue and a priority issue. Amtrak prioritizes the projects based on the funding we have, Washington's first, and followed by Pennsylvania. I would love to do everything concurrently, but our hands are tied in that situation. I completely understand why you would want it done concurrently, but it's unfair.
Well, because they both have the same problem. They have the same pipes, they have the same clearance issues, they have the same everything. So even if you can't do the projects concurrently, you should be able to give us a plan concurrently so that we understand the two impacts.
Well, it all depends on the path we go here. I mean, if we're going to close the road, then, you know, we have a path moving forward. If we're not and you guys want, you know, don't want the road closed, don't want the clearance, and the road has to be suppressed, then it's a whole other path moving forward with it comes to the utilities and everything else. So from what I'm hearing is, is you guys want us to solve the problem with truckers on Pennsylvania Avenue as part of this project?
This would be helpful for us in town if there was no clearance for the trucks to come through to on South Pennsylvania Avenue.
Understood. Unfortunately, we can't answer that question here today. I mean, this has got to go through upper management. It's way above my head, but I mean, I'd be more than willing to bring it back to them and see what we can do. I can't make any promises here.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, Ms. Sherlock.
Since Pennsylvania Avenue is a state highway, what kind of challenges would that be?
It opens some challenges that we would have to get through. I mean, township doesn't own it, the state owns it. We have to work with the state.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I think we'd like to hear from John Later, our Public Works Director on this. At least that's what the borough manager tells me.
Yes, John, I wanted to open the opportunity for you to have input on this. John Later, our Public Works Superintendent.
So I had spoken with them before the meeting. My concern, let alone with the chief's, is just our emergencies. We get in a situation, there's only three accesses to the man. You cut it down to two. Now, again, we talked about flooding, we talked about other issues. It's, and the residents too. The residents use that road. I know the traffic study might say they don't, but they do. I know the police use it a lot, we as Public Works use it a lot. That's, to me, I think depressing the road is the way to go. I understand they don't want to do, I know they don't want to do it, it's a money situation, but to me, it doesn't matter. It's our road, and we need to make our, it's for our residents. We have to make our residents happy too. And the people that I've talked to say they'd like to keep that open. They like that access. And then also, then you go, then I go for Public Works, I go, now you close it, now all that maintenance, that's all my maintenance now. That's all my shoveling, that's all my clearing during storms and things like that, maintaining that area. But mostly, it's mostly about access. We have to have access to that other end of town. And I think Helen, you said it, it's, you know, residents will get stuck now if something, we get a situation where Pennsylvania Avenue floods, or, I didn't say flood, there's an accident on Pennsylvania Avenue, and that's closed. Now how do we get our traffic around town? So my opinion, I think the chief, I think, I don't speak for the chief, but him and I discussed it, we think it should be open and stay open.
I tend to agree, especially if the trucks continue going on South Pennsylvania Avenue and there's no plan to help us with that situation. Residents who take the shortcut of Washington Street will now have to sit in truck traffic, and then they could be 20 minutes delayed because of that, because there is no other way to go.
Right, and I don't know what the minimum height is for a side road for the bridge or the overpass, but the state has a minimum. Scott, you know that, right? I mean, it's a minimum that they have to require.
Well, I don't know if it's like a required minimum. I mean, there are, there are roads out there that have like a 13-foot clearance on them.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, right, so as long as, but there still has to be a minimum for tractor trailers on a state highway as of right now.
Well, we're going to be a secondary highway.
Right.
So I don't know if that has, Scott, do you know, does that have a second, does that have a different clearance than major arteries?
Yeah, if it's a secondary road, it can make whatever you want. I mean, there's, there's bridges up in Edison, New Jersey, they lie about it. They put 13-3, 13-2 on it just to keep trucks out of it. What, would you guys happen to know the clearance for a fire truck by any chance?
That all depends on if you're talking about a standard pumper truck or a ladder truck or a rescue truck.
I don't know if we, we don't have a ladder truck, so it would be a, I don't think we have a...
You know, when I was on site a couple weeks ago, I don't think you're going to get a fire truck underneath your curb.
10-6 you're not, 12-6 you can, not, because our parade route goes underneath that bridge, and all the fire trucks clear it, fire trucks clear it at 12-6. So 10-6 is probably not a, going to happen.
Mr. Paul, one, another comment?
Yes, Ms. Sherlock.
I'm hoping that someday there's movement on the old Union Firehouse, which is on the other side of that, along with that parking lot, that large area. I'm hoping that that can be acquired someday and have some kind of, you know, business or living arrangements. I think that would, that's going to cause more traffic if that happens. I have no, I have no knowledge that it's going to happen anytime soon, but I think it's something we should consider. I just, I...
Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the public comment section of our meeting. Each person who wants to speak gets three minutes, and we, the sign-up sheet here, Mary Uranda is first to speak.
On May 5th, 2023, Save Williamson Park filed a motion in Orphans Court to stop an illegal transfer of ownership of a portion of Williamson Park. The Morrisville Economic Development Corporation recently entered into an agreement of sale with the Yardley Restaurant Group in which the old Waterworks property and a portion of Williamson Park were sold, which is illegal. Williamson Park land containing the water tower adjacent to the old Waterworks was reported to be part of the sale. However, the land containing the water tower is shown by the Bucks County Planning Commission to be part of Williamson Park. The only legal way for the transferring ownership of Williamson Park land under state law is for council to seek the approval of Bucks County Orphans Court as required by the Donated or Dedicated Property Act. Since council did not receive Orphans Court approval for changing the ownership of Parkland to either the EDC or the Yardley Restaurant Group, the transfer is illegal. Save Williamson Park and 10 other litigants have petitioned the Orphans Court to prevent the sale in its current form since it includes the sale of Williamson Park land. Council has apparently illegally allowed a change in ownership of part of Williamson Park, and we ask that the sale be declared null and void. Council has previously tried to evade requirements of Orphans Court approval. Council's plan to develop Williamson Park was initiated on November 20th, 2021, when they passed Resolution 1066. This resolution approved a redevelopment authority report falsely claiming Williamson Park is blighted and subsequently granted authority to the RDA to proceed with selling Williamson Park to a developer. In response, Save Williamson Park and 10 other litigants filed a lawsuit with Orphans Court to prevent the park from being illegally sold or developed. For reasons unknown, a court date has not been forthcoming. The recent agreement of sale indicates that the plan to develop Williamson Park is being acted upon. Therefore, SWP's most recent motion to stop the current sale again requests that the court rule on the legality of Resolution 1066, in which council transferred authority of the park to the RDA for future development. We love and value Williamson Park. It is an integral part of Morrisville and belongs to all of its residents. Borough Council, the Morrisville Economic Development Corporation, and the redevelopment authority do not have the right to permit the sale or development of any portion of the park. the park. Say Williamson Park and 10 of our neighbors are committed to protecting our park from being taken from us illegally. Thank you.
Excuse me, Council President Paul. May I, may I say a couple of words? Just, I was accused, I'm being accused of being a criminal because the word illegal is in here. So if I'm being accused of criminality, I don't know the exact Webster definition of blighted, and it is, it can be a derogatory term. The work on the paint job down there was beautiful, but if you get close to that building, the wood that comes out, and I'm not a contractor, so I don't know what that wood is that comes out, but it's like rotted, and there's a hole in the roof. Public Works can't put anything in there that can't get wet because it'll get destroyed, but that's near to here nor there. Now, we have a gentleman that has four very successful restaurants. He has one in Doylestown. He has one in Yardley. He has one in Princeton. He has one in Cape May. For the life of me, I cannot figure out what in the world made this guy believe in Marsville. He believes in Marsville so much, he wants to open two places up here. The Yardley Distillery and the Tex-Mex place down here. Now, I don't know about him, but if I was in the business of believing in a place, and if I was here my first month and I got a lawsuit over a water tower that I, it should have been taken down by now. Every other town's taking their water towers down. New Falls Road, that water tower came down. Middletown has water towers coming down, but our water tower be there forever. I just, again, I'm not making any accusations. I'm just saying that the culture of Marsville, like anyone that wants to open a business here is going to say, God, this guy went, he's highly successful. He could open anywhere, and he picked Marsville for two places, and he's getting this stuff. I don't know. That's, that, they're just my thoughts. Thank you for letting me speak, Council President.
Good evening. Jane Berger, 90 West Maple Avenue. I'm here to speak about the upcoming PSAB conference. As a former member of council, I attended many, if not most, of all of those conferences, and I did find them to be worthwhile. In recent years, the boot camp that's in the winter after every municipal election is really more concentrated and really deals more in depth with a lot of the borough issues. But I did notice this year, on Sunday morning, there is a mini boot camp. So if, a couple of recommendations, if council grants approval this evening, is one that I hope both of Mrs. Sherlock and Ms. Engelhardt would be able to go out early Sunday morning so they could be there at 11:00, and please sign up for that because that's required. If not, then there really isn't anything the rest of Sunday that pertains to the borough. I mean, Joe Theismann's a wonderful guy and a motivational speaker, but if you can't do that, a couple of suggestions to kind of contain some of the costs for this is to go out early Monday morning, and there wouldn't be the hotel for Sunday night. As a member of council, I've carpoolled, I've gone out Monday morning, shared rooms. I mean, sometimes if you're friends, you can share rooms. Sometimes that doesn't work, but if you could look at ways to contain those costs, not all the meals are covered. If you're there Sunday evening, it's not. Monday evening is not. Tuesday, thank God, that evening is now part of the registration fee. And of course, Wednesday is the business meeting. So you want to be there on Monday to find out who's going to be the second vice president and vote for that person on Tuesday, and the business meeting where you're voting the resolution is Wednesday. So there are good things here to come, but I wish that the two of you are there, maybe the reimbursement could be $500 or the way you can combine costs to help the borough out. And I say that this year, only because, because of the financial constraints on the borough, putting the general fund and maintaining our police department, you had to enact 1% earned income tax, which I know was not something that everyone did lightly, was with a heavy heart. So I'm just asking to consider those concerns and try to minimize the costs. I guess a final note, and I want to say that I went many years with Mr. Sherlock to that, and of course, we were at that awkward age where our kids were out of high school and we didn't have grandkids. So as other borough, I've seen people there that have used that to have family members come and kind of share the room, you know, two beds and a court. That, I don't know that that would certainly be an issue for either of you two ladies, but I mention it just as a caution. And if family wants to come, her, she's a wonderful place to go, even if you don't eat the chocolate, that if that would be something that works for the family, then I would hope that that hotel night for that night or two would not be charged to the borough. But I do hope the council can find a way to accommodate regarding minimizing some of the costs so that both of you can go and attend the conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berger.
Mr. Paul, may I comment since we're commenting?
I guess that's the, that's the theme tonight. Go ahead.
The new norm. I appreciate the suggestions, but not that I feel I have to defend myself on it, but for the many years that I went there, I never took my family. So, and I did not. So, and I have no intentions of taking any family now. Thank you.
Okay. By the way, anyone who didn't sign up would like to make any public comments. Last chance. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the approval of minutes.
Maybe we do this in block? Or no?
Better do it separately, just in case.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion then that we approve the Borough Council's regular minutes of 41823.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, actually.
Go ahead.
On the meeting minutes for 418, I had abstained from a vote on item 8J regarding the Canon contract for our printer. My reasoning for abstaining was not documented in the minutes, and I wanted to make sure that that was clarified if necessary. Is that necessary?
It would have been nice to have in the minutes, I think.
So for the record, for the minutes for 418, my reason for abstention for that vote was because a family member works for Canon. I wanted to avoid impropriety.
Thank you. Will the minister reflect that?
Sure. Thank you.
Any other comments on the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Paul?
Yes.
The, let me go back to the minutes. The Waste Management Presentation, the motion that evening actually said that it was a presentation of the $65,000 check, which I'm extremely grateful for, and I didn't want to sully that presentation because the donation was so special. But once again, the wording said the donation is to help the Marsville Police Department employ a motor carrier specialist officer. And that is not what we're doing. We, it's an assignment. So I don't want the public to think that we're actually employing somebody different to fill this position. I had asked to change that wording the night of, and I was told that we didn't need to change it, that it would be explained that evening, but it never was. So I just want clarification that we're not employing somebody for this position. We're using an officer, and it will be his assignment. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Nancy, but you don't have the authority to make that. That would be a vote by council.
Excuse me?
That would be a vote by council.
To what?
That's not to what we're going to do with, whether we assign it or it's a full-time position. And those monies were given for that. That is what the proposal was.
It never should have said that we were employing a full person to do this project. We've said that how many times?
It was placed in the budget, and once you approve the budget, it's in the budget. And this money is there to reimburse the borough in order to have this position.
I disagree.
That's great.
I don't think it's, the issue is whether the minutes are correct. So I don't think you need to get into that for this purpose of approving the meeting minutes. If you want to amend them to.
The minutes were correct for that meeting.
Yes, they were. I'm agreeing with that.
Thank you.
If you want to amend them for the recusal, we can make a motion to amend to note Jason's recusal reasoning.
I'd like the minutes for this meeting to reflect Ms. Sherlock's comments.
That's exactly what I want. I'm not asking to change the motion. We can't do that, obviously, but I'm just clarifying my comments, please.
Any other comments? Okay, then, we still have a pending motion to approve with the clarification that Mr. Menes had requested, and based on that, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. I get a motion for approval of the minutes for the special meeting of May 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to finance, you all have the bill list attached to the agenda. Can I get a motion of the bill list?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Mayor's report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank and congratulate each and every person that took part in our last local election here. That is something that it takes a big commitment, and you may not always agree with the candidate, but people, people who want to get involved in these ways, it's something that I appreciate no matter what. So I, again, want to congratulate those people that were involved and wish them well no matter how that day went for them. And of course, we'd all like to see more people in these elections in the future. It's, you know, we'd love the people to participate, but we'd like to, you know, see some more people throw their hat in the ring. So, you know, as we be leaders up here, hopefully that'll happen a little more. I'd like to clear something up. It's just real quick, I've been getting a lot of questions because there's not a lot of information out there about this year's Memorial Day Parade. So to be very clear, there is one, and I will be putting up some details on my Facebook page tomorrow, but there most definitely is the annual parade. So get everybody out there, have some fun. It'll be a good day like it always is. Something that we've talked a lot about up here since I've been mayor is that we need more police manpower. And I know it's a difficult position, but it is, so we have to get those numbers back to where they used to be. And, you know, we've, we've had a few, a few times where it's come up, where there was things that we had to get past first, like contract negotiation, like what we, you know, at one point, we had no idea when or how much EIT money would start coming in, but we're past those things now. So now it is time to put this discussion on the table because we're right back where we were at the beginning of last summer, where we're going to get stuck in an overtime position, or more terrifying to me if any, God forbid, anything happens. And we had some, we had a couple tragedies last year, and, and, you know, we had some people that needed some time off or that we lost. And so we're at that point again, where if we lose one more person right now, we're going to be going into a hole. We're going to have a problem with coverage, and we're going to have a problem with overtime. So it bothers me to spend overtime money when I could be spending that money on an office here. So I just want our public, I know this is a very important topic to everybody. I also know it's very complicated, and there's a lot to it, and I, so I just, I'd like to see the public give me a call if this is something that's important to you, give your council people a call, and let's just see what we can do to get those numbers back up. Like I said, it's extremely important. We just can't rely on someone else having to come in or all the other options that would be out there if our, if our police department takes too many more hits. So it's very important to me. It's very important to our chief. So if it's important to you, please let us know. As for, I do want to comment on something Nancy said, is for the motor carrier position. First of all, we, the gentleman that is doing that is going through his training. In fact, there was just some planning on that this week, so that is moving forward very well, and we're very proud of that. But I do want to kind of confirm what Nancy said, that me and chief several times here have said that it's, it's not as simple to just give somebody that full-time job, especially with how many other people I have on the street. Would we like to do that? Of course we would, but we need more manpower first. It was described more than once, we've discussed it two or three times up here, that the position would be an officer that does truck enforcement, so you can still have him do both. We've also explained the civil service process it requires to have someone just dedicated in that position. So I just want to, you know, I just want to acknowledge both what Helen and Nancy are saying here, because these things are extremely important, and I think we all want the same thing. It's just a matter of how we get there. So thanks, everybody, for listening, and have a good week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we go forward, I just want to say, I think, Mr. Mayor, you're doing the council a disservice by suggesting that we're right back to where we were. I mean, since I've been on council, we've added both full-time and part-time officers. I just want to, I just want the record to reflect that.
Yeah, no, that's fine. You're correct about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're correct.
Now, we're on to the borough chiefs.
We started number-wise.
Thank you. I want the police chief's report. Chief McClay?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I have to agree with the mayor. We have eight full-time police officers. We have eight full-time police officers. One's injured. So yes, we are at the minimum we've ever been. So I hate to describe it, Council President, but we're not, we need to hire three or four officers. We need to be able to look forward to where we're going. We're busy. We just spent the last week in court. We put a dangerous felon away who burglarized the Quality Inn and broke Officer Smelter's arm. He was found guilty on all charges. He will be facing a long time in jail. But there was, there's an incident of, how many bodies do we have? We have four people in court, including myself. So we have people going to court all day and then working at nighttime. We don't have the manpower. We need to really come up with a manpower solution. Everybody talks about across the nation now how short we are in police officers. We have to come up with a plan. We have to take advantage of that consortium list, if there's anybody even left on that list at this point. But we are shorthanded. We're trying to get through the training. It's very hard. We have range training coming up. We have another officer, we have the officer going to truck training for two weeks, so I had to cover two full weeks of training. We just don't have the manpower. We've really got to come up with a plan, whether that's keeping your police department or funding it properly so we can have the amount of manpower we need. We have spent a lot of time in the last three, four, five weeks at the high school. We've had a tremendous amount of altercations over there. The mayor and I are meeting with the superintendent and the principal. I'm sorry, the superintendent and the.
School board president.
School board president this week. Matter of fact, Thursday. We have a lot of issues over at that high school, a lot of bad fights. We've given out a lot of citations. We've charged kids with assault. We've charged kids with assault on the principal. There's a lot of problems there. So we're going to try to come up with some solutions on Thursday. I've reached out to the, what's the coalition?
Marsville Coalition. That is the grant money from the Compass Church.
Right. So we've met, we've reached out to them for help, for suggestions, to try to put some counseling in effect for some of the children and come up with a plan for that with the Mars. We've had a lot of bad fights there in the last couple of weeks. What else is going on? Senate Officers Crisis Intervention Training this past week, which was a terrific class, but again, it stretches our manpower out. So I got to plead with you, we need to really look at where we're going with our police department. We need two, four more officers. We don't need more part-time officers. I need more full-time officers. So please consider where we're going. If anybody has any questions, my office is always open. I'd love to be able to meet with you and find out what our problems are. And I am available all the time. So thank you.
I have a quick question, Chief. Quite a few of the reports that you've given up there, you've started it with the phrase crime is down, last year or the year before. Is crime still down or is crime up now? I got that, we got that in the.
If you ask me a question, I'm going to answer it.
Okay.
I'm going to be accurate about it for you. So right now, our Part 1 offenses are down 5%. So we're doing well. The officers are hustling. I'm feeling a bit. The officers are hustling, I'm filling the positions, but it's very difficult. And you can't continually ask your officers to work overtime and more overtime and more overtime, especially with the summer coming up.
We have incidents that happen in this borough that there's bad stuff that happens. If we have enough bad stuff that happens in this borough, can we go to the state and say, "Listen, we have a lot of bad stuff, can we get some help?"
You can try that, but the state is also very shorthanded. So they will not send anybody in here.
I'm not talking about the state police, I'm talking about money.
I don't know. You're your politicians, you need to go and seek that through the government.
So if Harrisburg has completely accurate crime stats from here, and we say, "Listen, this is what's going on, we need some help."
We're not the only borough and municipality sure on officers. Every borough I know is sure. And we're pretty well handicapped because of our civil service system. If we were a township, I would be able to hire, if the funding was there, directly off resumes. But we have to do it through a civil service process that is crippling. So that would be a wonderful thing to get that changed.
You get what changed? The hiring?
The civil service process.
Okay. And how does
It makes things a lot easier to hire people.
Right.
But you still have to have the funding there.
I don't think, we're not going to take on the Commonwealth and change their hiring system for boroughs.
Excuse me?
I don't think we're going to be able to convince the Commonwealth to change the system for hiring borough police.
But we all, we all realize
I don't think that would be time effective.
A township in a borough is tremendous. Right? And that's, you know, so that's kind of tough.
Are the powers that be that, that you can talk to and ask for help from, do they, do they understand the, like, the layout that we have here? Let me explain what I mean by layout. If you take the border of Pennsylvania all the way around, from all the way around the state, we're in a really, really, really unique position with a lack of mutual aid on the other side of our border. I'm not saying anything bad about Trenton. We don't have mutual aid with Trenton. We have Falls, we have Lower Make. Every other borough, I mean, the next biggest, Phillipsburg, New Jersey, Easton's bigger than that, but all around the state, you don't have a huge open flank, for lack of a better phrase, in your, in your defense. That's an issue. We have half of our, this side over here, there's no mutual aid. And again, I'm not saying anything bad about Trenton, I'm saying it's just we have an unprotected flank over there. It's like, something happens, bleeds over our borough from Falls Township into Marsville, we have help from Falls, Marsville Falls. Something bleeds over from Lower Makefield, we have Lower Makefield and Marsville Mutual Aid. Something bleeds over from Trenton, there's no mutual aid there. There's, there's got to be funds that can help us out with that, somewhere. Something, there's got to be something that can help us. And it's a unique situation, because there isn't, I don't believe there's another borough, township, village, city, whatever, in the state that has that size of an open flank with as small of a department that we have. There's no other town that's Pennsylvania-town with, that has 10 times the number of residents on its border, a state border.
I can't disagree with you. So what's the solution?
It's above our pay grade here. Way above our pay grade.
So you basically have to take care of your own. We have their user funding that we do have to be able to hire more police officers so we take care of our own. We can't, we can't rely on Trenton.
No, I'm not saying, no, we can't, we never will. I'm not even suggesting that. They have their problems over there, they don't want to hear about ours.
Right.
They have theirs.
And they're shorthanded manpower. They have the same, you know, but we've been lucky so far with what the crime that we do have. Do I think most of our criminals come from over on the other side of the bridge? Absolutely. No doubt about it. The car thefts that we have are, a lot of our citizens' fault, because, and I got to ask the citizens to start looking at what's in their glove compartment. Make sure there's not a spare key in your glove compartment for the other car that's in your driveway. Make sure your key fobs work. I had a car this morning, the woman said, "My car automatically locks." I said, "Let me see it." "Oh, it's not working." Yeah. There's no doubt, we have people who all night long walk in the streets, but we have to help ourselves. We can't leave our computers in the backseat of the car. We can't leave our key fobs in our coffee cups. Almost all my cars this year, and I've had 10 stolen so far this year, have been stolen because the keys were left in the car. So we have to help, we have to do our own housekeeping to be able to solve some of those problems. You know, I have people walking around in the middle of the night checking, you know, checking doors, no doubt about that. And with the constitutional way it is, it's kind of tough just to stop people from walking up the street. So, but we have to help ourselves on that. So do you think there's other places out there that have the funding? I just, you know, the state seems to have a lot of money these days. Let's see if they'll bring it down to us. Now, we got, we, we're spending a lot of money on the building, which I understand we need, but we got a lot of ARPA money that was supposed to come to the police officers, that come to the police stations, and that hasn't happened. And there's no plans for it, because we have to fix the building. So you have to put your priorities in whatever slot you want to put them in.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
The manager's report. Ms. Danko.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Good evening, everyone. I would like to take this opportunity, it is the Public Works Week. I'd like to honor the Public Works Department for all the hard work that they do. So if you do see anyone that's out there working, that's working for the Public Works Department, thank them for such a good job that they do. We're happy to say that we did a resolution for honoring the Public Works Week this week, and we'll certainly pass that along to them. Again, thank you, Public Works. I would also like to thank all the entities who clean our parks, Robert Morris statue area, the preserve, all of those different areas. It's that time of the year when we have all of these wonderful volunteers that come out and spend their precious time and help clean up Morrisville. It's so important for them to be thanked, because they do put a lot of time and effort towards these things, because they really care. So again, thank you all entities that do all of those things. We certainly appreciate you and your efforts. Going towards the Bridge Street process, progress over there, you'll see a rendering that I talk about every single month for some time now. Since we have been able to acquire more funding for this project, we have a new grant agreement that's on the council agenda for this evening for approval. We're hoping that once that is executed, we will see construction to begin again within the month. We hope for by end of the year completion, and at that time, we're hoping to prepare for a ribbon-cutting ceremony, excuse me. We also have some continued collaboration with an engineer that is taking place regarding CDBG possible funds for the Manor Park area. We're hoping that what we can do is resurrect some grant fundings for Manor Park. We had a lot of different discussions about Manor Park as to what really is needed to take place. So have that on the agenda this evening. Although it's been on many agendas, it's really a formality to just continue to keep it there, just so council is apprised of the process that we're taking for that. I attended the Morrisville Business Association Business Card Exchange Mixer at the distillery in town, and it was, I must say, it was a very, very nice event. It was, it was well-attended, and I would just like to thank the Morrisville Business Association for having those types of items in the borough. I think it's a wonderful event and a wonderful thing for businesses to get involved with, because we certainly want to bring good businesses to the Morrisville borough. We're in the process, we have the, we had the roof project out to bid, as Chief McClay said, we, we need to spend money on this building. Unfortunately, we have issues here that have been, you know, put to the side for some time, because the funds were not here. As you walk up the steps, there's a garbage can collecting water in the hallway. That is not how a borough building should be maintained. We need a new roof, these are things that we desperately need, and we're working towards them. So at this time, the roof bid is on the agenda this evening for approval. We hope that we will have, once it's awarded and everything is finalized, we hope to have construction start as soon as possible, if not, more towards the fall. It will depend on solely the availability of the contractor. At the same time, we also just completed the sewer line repair, that is, to this side of Borough Hall. It's 90% complete, final grading is needed, and that's also being paid with ARPA funds. We also have an electrical architect firm on the agenda for this evening for approval, because we have some electrical issues in the building. So we're diligently working towards getting all of these issues looked at, reviewed, and hopefully taken care of. There's many issues, as I said, and we're doing one at a time, because we are diligently looking at the cost of these items. Because of concern of cost, we have to make sure that we do one item after the next, because we don't want to go over the costs that we do have for ARPA funds. As you saw this evening, Amtrak provided a proposal to the borough. I thought that was very well spoken of. I did have some work done downstairs in the borough building, because we had some damaged lights and so forth that are out of code, and we certainly wanted to get that updated. We're in the midst of a three-year audit with Highway Aid Liquid Fuels funding, and that's going quite well. We also have been working with Pendot regarding the proposed warehouse in Falls Township. They've applied for an HOP permit, and it borders Morrisville Borough. So we've been requesting certain signage, directing the traffic away from Morrisville Borough, and future discussions and meetings are going to be held. Chief McClay ordered the solar signs, it's a solar speed sign for South Pennsylvania Avenue. That was paid for with the donation funds that were received from Waste Management last month. We're hoping that that sign will be installed, I believe, this week. Thank you. Oh, it's up. Thank you. Thank you, John. We did just put the streets paving projects out to bid, we'll have that on the June meeting agenda. The discussion regarding this paving project was, this project was worked on with the borough engineers last year. There was an issue with the advertising, and it never went to bid, and it never went to come back to the council for approval. So instead of choosing other streets that may have needed something else, we had to go with this, because we already had this information in place. So we will, though, be reviewing streets and so forth as to what, you know, what we'll be doing in the, in the future times. And since we have maneuvered our funding, we have now taken the, the cost of employees and public works out of the Liquid Fuels Highway Aid funds, we've put them in the general fund, and the EIT monies are paying for that. Since we're doing that, that will open up more funding for our streets. All the funding that we get from Highway Aid and Liquid Fuels will now be in that account, and we can solely utilize them towards more roadway systems, and that's the goal moving forward. So I know there's a lot of talk about the EIT and so forth, as to where these monies are going to go. You may not see that in this year's budget, but you will certainly see them in next year's, because they're already allotted for. And there's, there'll be more discussion on these items in, at future finance meetings, if anyone is interested in attending those. The Public Works Superintendent ordered the new dump truck, salt spreader, and plow, which will be paid for fully by the grant monies that we acquired, so we're very happy to, again, discuss that and talk about it. Tonight, we have a policy committee information regarding alcohol in the parks. We certainly want to know what the residents would like to see. Alcohol, no alcohol, what would you like to see? That will be advertised shortly, possibly, if council does vote on that this evening, whatever way they vote. We've also had, excuse me. We've also had some reoccurring issues with code enforcement on some of the problematic properties that we've had in the past, and we've been diligently working towards all of those items, trying to make sure that this is the time of the year with grass cutting and so forth. We're diligently trying to make sure that we're on top of these things. So if people do see, or hear, or know of problematic issues or areas, we have the, the online Citizens Reporter. I encourage everyone to please use that. If you, you know, if you can please put as much information in there as possible, if code doesn't take care of it, John takes care of it, or the chief takes care of those certain items, we encourage that. We encourage people to please report those items, so we can diligently take care of those items. That is all I have, Council President, and I don't know if anyone has any questions. Thank you.
Can you reiterate that there, if they do go into TRAZER and report those items, that it is privileged and no one else will know?
Yes, if you go into the Citizens Reporter, you're required to place your name and address and so forth. That's so in case we need to get back to you or ask you questions, if you're missing something. Say you, you say there's a problem, you know, with, with someone's, you know, garbage is all over or something, and we don't really have an exact address. That's so we can reach you. That is held confidential, we do not utilize your name. If we were to have to go to district court and have a witness, we would certainly ask you at that point if you'd be interested in helping. At that time, you could then become, you know, a known issue or item, but if not, and these things are able to be rectified, that is held confidential. That information does not go to whoever the complainant is complaining about. It does not happen. Of course, some of us, you know, we have neighbors, and immediately, we think, if it's a neighbor that's reporting something, they think it's them. But staff is not to inform anyone else of whoever is complaining. That is supposed to be held confidential.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, Ms. Sherlock.
Just a couple of questions. Regarding the Bridge Street project, I know that you supply us with the minutes and so forth, and it did mention that they had discussed the rail, the railing. Have they actually made a determination?
We haven't heard anything yet.
Okay.
No, and I know you had asked about the entities, it was, the information was in a previous drop, but I didn't have the time to look at
Okay.
who it was, but it was several different, I think it was the historic, one of the historical groups that was really
Probably DCNR, Delaware, friends of Delaware Canal, probably.
It might have been, it might have been that group.
And I see that there's, I was just wondering, we now have an easement on the other side, on the south side of the Bridge Street, and I was just wondering how, what were the dimensions of that easement? Is it just for the, the bridge that we're, I mean, the, you know, the trail that we're putting down? Or is it either side? Are we infringing on the pond?
No, the idea of the need for the easement was solely to work. It was really for the contractors to be able
So not afterwards, then?
Yes, just for the contractors to be able to work.
Just for working.
Yes.
And then there was a question there about Gilmore. In fact, I think you had asked them, you wanted to make sure that Gilmore, they needed to determine whether there should be another independent study or not, and I don't know if they ever got back to you about that.
So what had been taking place is Pendot had reviewed the plan, DCNR reviewed the plan, and everyone was saying, "Well, does Gilmore still have to review the plan?" In actuality, yes. Yes, because Gilmore is the borough engineers. So Gilmore would be responsible for saying and reviewing this and saying, "Morrisville, I see this as an issue," or "I don't see this as an issue, I feel that the plan looks good." So yes, in all essence, Gilmore should review the plan, Gilmore did review the plan, and I endorsed Gilmore reviewing the plan.
Good, okay. And then the, the DCNR contract that we're approving this evening, there's just one thing in there that it mentions that we have to do the seeding and all the grading again. Is that always part of our job to do that? Or is that never part of the project?
I'm sorry, Nancy, I'm not sure what you're talking about. Which one?
The, the DCNR contract that we're, I forget what number it is, that we're going to approve this evening, that has to do with that bridge project plan. The DCNR, they gave us like, you know, 16 pages of rules.
Oh, yes.
And one of them is that we have to do all the And one of them is that we have to do all the reseeding.
Reseeding, it's part of the contract, but eventually, if there are issues, we would have to be, we would have to take care of seeding in the future.
Okay. I just didn't know if it was always our, you know, charge.
Initially, they should be doing all of the whole entire project. But if something were to occur in the future, say that we needed to do something, it would be our responsibility to take care of it.
Okay. Thank you. And the warehouse you're referring to, is that the one that's behind the Rogers Foam? Because I know that Falls actually was considering changing their zoning further south. They wanted to do a, it's light industrial, and they wanted to do a heavy industrial further south on Pennsylvania Avenue. And I was just wondering, so you're referring to the one that's behind Rogers, right? Closest to Post Road?
Yes, correct.
Well, I encourage everyone to contact Falls Township supervisors and let them know that if they change that zoning, that just means more heavy trucks on the south side, on the south end.
Yes. Yes. If anybody can attend their Planning Commission meetings and discuss how the impact could be on Morrisville, it would be greatly appreciated. It's good for residents to be involved.
And one last thing. Can we consider, you know, when we diverted all the traffic off of Pennsylvania Avenue, which of course was warranted, what we've done now is send it to Philadelphia Avenue. We have residents that live on Philadelphia Avenue. So how do we fix it so they're not as impacted either? And we did get an email from a person that lives there, and they're absolutely right. There's one, one speed sign, and it's actually past the old Silk Tronics, and it's 40. So I think when we're asking the state to reduce some of our, you know, speed limits, that maybe we could add Philadelphia Avenue because it is a state highway, at least at our border, or, you know, 25 ahead, or whatever they do it. Because, you know, where it is 40, it's actually Falls. It's not us. But then, you know, it's the problem when we have, you know, close borders.
Certainly, if council would like to entertain that, we can certainly put that in another agenda for everyone to vote on and say that they would like to see that. I did send an email to PENDOT regarding Delmore. I haven't heard anything back.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. On to committee reports. Any committee reports?
Yes.
I have a committee report for the Parks and Recreation. We met last month, and mostly we went overview on some of the things that are going up, some of the events that we're doing. But we did talk about the Williamson Park Comprehension Plan, and I don't know if you were going to talk about that tonight or not.
I was going to comment as you did your report. I was going to kick in if that's okay with you.
Definitely.
Thank you.
So, as you can remember, when we were doing our budget, we had this grant that was written several, a few years ago.
2018.
2018. And it was a comprehensive planning grant. We put up 50, or they gave us $50,000, but we had to match at 50 grand. We don't have that 50 grand. But this was the only way we were going to get more funding at the time we were told. And so since then, since COVID, some things have changed. And so Judith came and talked to us at the last meeting, and I'll let her take it from there, Judith.
Certainly. Thank you, Catherine. So what had transpired through all of this is, years ago before COVID, it was important to have a planning grant for items. When you had a park and you didn't know what you were going to do with it, to get grant funding, what you wanted to do was you wanted a master site plan. So back then, that's how things were. Now, since COVID, what they're doing is they're not focusing on the master site plan anymore because, first of all, it takes a lot of time, a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of information, and money. And money that most municipalities don't have to put into a master site plan. So I came back to the Parks and Recreation Committee and Borough Council and explained that what I would like to do is speak with DCNR and find out what their thoughts are in us returning that grant and just solely working towards getting funding for construction items. We already have a park. We have Williamson Park. The baseball fields are in place. The tennis courts are where they are, you know, bathrooms, et cetera. And there had been some plans in the past, just kind of some drawings and so forth that some people have come up with. I know MEAC came up with some, some plans, and Parks and Recreation has, Catherine has some from the past. So the thought process would be that we would send that funding back because we would have to put a $50,000 match to that. So we would send that back, no harm, no foul. DCNR was amenable to that. They certainly understood. And DCNR just recently gave us more money for Bridge Street. So they were happy that we were going to focus on Bridge Street, utilize our time on, to get that accomplished, and then know that we have other parks in the Borough, not just Williamson Park, not just the Bridge Street. We have Manor Park. We have all these different parks that what we really should be doing is applying for the funding, the funding to see something actually take place. So what our plan is at this point, it's on the agenda this evening to return that grant. DCNR is happy about that. They're not upset. There will be no repercussions to the Borough in any way when we go further to ask for money to actually do something, construction funding. And that's what we really would like to do. We want to move towards construction funding quicker. Because with that master plan, it could take up to four years to, till you're able to really apply for construction funding. So we certainly don't want to take all of that time and have it wasted, along with $50,000 that the Borough could really put towards construction. So that's the process that we're going to follow. In the meanwhile, what we're going to be able to do now, that will open up some funding for the Borough Council and the Parks and Recreation to have some internal meetings here during our Parks and Recreation committee meetings. We can now do some advertising. We can work with Gilmore. We can put it out to the public and have some public input meetings here. What would you like to see at Williamson Park? Would you like to see pickleball? Would you like to see half pickleball, some tennis courts? So those are the types of things that we want to work towards, and that's what we'll be doing. So you'll hear and see in the future. But right now, what we had to do, we have it on the agenda to return the grant. After we have all of that done, then we will be moving forward with the Parks and Recreation Committee at their meetings and inviting the public and so forth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That sums it up. Also, we talked about, I mean, we talked with a meeting that Judith and I and Nancy had with Gilmore, and just to put a new bathroom there is about $600,000. And playground equipment is like a million dollars. I mean, it was, I was like, well, I guess it's party potties forever. I mean, it was unreal, the costs.
Yes.
And so, and then we also talked about working towards getting a Manor Park grant. So, because right now, we have nothing for the six- to 12-year-olds to play on. And so we were working, and we're having to vote on that again, so we can continue to get revenue in so that we can make our parks usable and safe for all people in Morrisville.
No, and thank you. And really, the reason that the Manor Park information is back on the agenda again for approval, it's been approved several times to do this. But when you are going for more money again, they like to see the minutes reflect that. So really, it's really a formality of what we're doing. And that's why we're doing that this evening.
Mr. Paul? Can I just add to that? One of the important things, Judith did mention it, is that we've been given a guarantee that we will not be punished or put down at the bottom of the list just because we've given money back. Because in the past, that's what they would do. They'd say, well, look, you don't want any money. We're going to find somebody else. So I hope, I mean, it's not really in writing, but...
It actually is.
Is it writing now?
I have emails, I have emails that are thanking us for being honest. And they said that when I say we're going to do something, we have done it. Since I've been working with them in the past year and a half, they said, when you say something, you've done it. And we respect that. We have a lot of places that tell us things, and they don't follow through. And that Morrisville at this time has followed through. They're very proud of that. And they're happy that we're going to get the Bridge Street completed first. And they know that we're coming back for more money. So they're well aware of that, and they've helped us already. They've actually provided us more money. So we are not going to be in any penalty phase whatsoever.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
No, that's all I have to report.
Thanks. Any other committee reports? Sorry, Ms. Robinson, do you have something you wanted to say before? I cut you off, I think, before.
No, okay.
Okay. Moving on then to action items, resolutions. Item 8A, call for a motion to approve payment in the amount of $110,000 to the Morrisville Fire Company as per 2023 Fire Fund Budget contingent upon receipt of their 2022 financial statement, schedule of events, current roster, and 2022 audit.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8B, call for a motion to approve payment in the amount of $52,000 to Capital Health EMS as per the 2023 EMS Fund Budget contingent upon receipt of their 2022 financial statement and audit. The payment amount of $37,000 reflects the deduction of $15,000 2023 annual fee due from Capital Health System, Inc. for leasing the building located at 139 North Washington Street, Morrisville, PA, per contract.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question, actually. Maybe the Borough Manager could answer. We got a report with regards to the Capital Health's responses. And I was trying, it says Morrisville Borough. And Morrisville Borough's time was only four seconds less than Yardley's, and but minutes more than Middletown. So I'm just wondering, is it Morrisville Borough or Morrisville area that that reflects? And I think that we should be able to find that out. I wasn't sure who to ask. That's concerning that they're headquartered here, but yet they're taking less time to get to Middletown than other parts of Morrisville.
I can explain that. I ran on the squad. The way the EMS is set up in the county, each area has their own advanced life support setup. If, when we took someone to what was Delaware Valley back in the day, the hospital by Sesame Place, whatever it's called now, Jefferson or Frankfurt, whatever, if we, we would take the patient into the ER, and then we would get on the radio, radio to Bucks, Medic 139, available. If a call came in like that second for someone in Middletown, they would hit us out on that call if we were the closest to it, or if somebody was, if, say, 168th, which is, I think it's Pendle Middletown, if they were tied up. Just like you see 154s in the Borough all the time, Levittown, Ferals Hills, or 100th at a Yardley, covering us. So it's a, it's a coverage game. So we could be, we could get, we could be available at the hospital. Say we took somebody to St. Mary's, we're Medic 139 available at St. Mary's. We get a call in the Borough, 100th is tied up and 155 is tied up. We have to come from St. Mary's to Morrisville. That's our response time.
But isn't the response time to the location of the call? That's my concern.
Yeah.
It says response time. So if I call on Bridge Street and they get there, that's great. So, but then they, I don't know.
If we're, if we're at Jefferson, Frankfurt, Bucks, and we get hit on a call to your house, it's going to take us a lot longer to get there from the hospital than it is from next door.
Okay. So that's, they don't really calculate then? They don't calculate just Marsville Borough from the headquarters to their homes? Okay.
Well, the majority of the calls would be, we'd be hit out here. But when you see us, if we're responding to a call in Middletown, odds are pretty good we're not leaving that building and going to Middletown. Probably getting hit out from St. Mary's, or we get out from Lower Bucks, any of the hospitals.
Okay. Thank you.
Capital Health. They're over in Hopewell.
Right. But we don't, we won't take a call in Jersey, like we don't cover over there.
I know, but they, they're been...
It's a call from Hopewell to here, yeah.
They've been taking people over there.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Thank you. 8C, call for motion to approve reimbursement for Councilwoman Nancy Sherlock in the amount of $250 for the fee to attend the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs Annual Conference, full package registration.
I so move.
Second.
Discussion?
So this was tabled last month. Why is it back on this month?
Because it was tabled.
Oh. Well, Nancy tabled it, so she tabled it knowing that it was going to come back on?
Yes. I wasn't aware of if it would or would not. I do, I mean, tabling is, there's a process.
Right.
I tend to agree with a lot of the comments that Jane Berger made regarding this conference. I know we're on 8C, but what would happen if you just went through the Sunday or just Monday morning rather than the full conference?
That's not my request. And that $250 fee starts on Sunday.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Or should we do this as a roll call?
Roll call, probably.
Okay, better do this roll call. Virginia, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Please.
Mr. Paul, who is the second on that? I'm sorry.
Jason S.
Jason.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
How many, real quick, how many nights is the hotel room for?
Three nights.
Three. Three nights.
Correct.
And it's two separate rooms?
Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, right?
Yes.
That's 8D.
It's not this motion.
Oh, the next one. Oh, this is for 8C. Okay. What is the bang for the buck in a June, June, Sunday, Gotten Hershey?
Well, I was going to say, we've already asked for a vote, but, all right, let's vote. Good, Virginia.
Thank you. Ms. Englehart?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
No.
Mr. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Law?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Shouldn't Nancy be abstaining because she's benefiting, or knows? That's not how voting works? She's not benefiting from it.
It's a reimbursement for a cost rather than, I think if you were, if you were actually getting something that would be considered a financial benefit rather than a cost reimbursement, I would, I would tend to agree with you. I don't, I don't think it's required for this.
Sorry, Virginia, the motion carry?
Yes, you did. Bye, Virginia.
Okay, thank you. Item 8D, call for motion to approve reimbursement for Councilwoman Nancy Sherlock in the amount of $762.57 for accommodations at the Hershey Lodge while attending the PSAB Annual Conference.
I so move.
Discussion?
Again, I agree with Ms. Berger. Is there any way that you guys could share a room so that we could eliminate $762.50 from the budget? And why is that?
I don't think that's an answer that we have to answer to you, Ms. Hall.
That's for three nights. Three nights in Hershey?
Correct.
Yes, it is. Are you guys going to be carpooling together?
Yes, we are.
And then you're going to ask for reimbursement for car expenses?
We have, and it's permissible.
Just asking.
Well, I haven't gotten there yet.
In other words, we're doing this in bits about... In other words, we're doing this in bits about it, so we don't really know what the total cost is. You know, that, we're doing this in drips and drabs. So be it. Any other questions?
I've got something to say. Just so Nancy and Catherine, so you know, this is going to cost, as you're well aware, this is going to cost the borough $2,300 to $2,500 by the time things are said and done. The chief gave earlier tonight a pretty reasoned, reasonable, reasoned and passionate request for money for more police. Tomorrow, he's going to give a presentation where he wants around chief $8500, $8600 for the part timers. You're going to ask for an increase in, for the part timers. And you had a figure on there, it's going to cost the borough $8,000 plus dollars, correct? So what's the figure, around $8,500, I think you wrote down? Just listen up. Your request is about a third of what the chief is going to request. So we have a choice between sending you to the Hershey Lodge or helping pay for the chief's request for part timers. I'm voting for the part timers.
Okay, first of all, you need to understand that they're two different budgets. And so one, no, let me finish, let me finish. I let you finish. It's two different budgets. One doesn't cross over to the other. Once you approve a budget, which you did, that money stays in that budget line. You can't just move it like that. Judas gave you all a copy of the Pennsylvania Code that requires a percentage of your, of your, of your money into training. It's required. You can't just say, we don't want, we don't believe in no training and take it out. That's against the law. If you didn't want it in there, you should have said something in December, but you did not. Right now, we are going because there's, we're delegates. There's legislation that we can vote on. There's information that we bring back, as we said before in our, in our other, we both did reports, to benefit the borough. And that's why we're going. It's not, I don't drink, Scott, so I don't stay up all night drinking, and I never have woken up with a hangover. You want me to, you know, you paying for this? I take it very, very seriously. And if you'd read my first report, you would know that I take it very, very seriously.
I would take it seriously, too. If I wasn't working, I'd probably go.
Of course.
And I would drive out there and I'd hand them a check for $250 from my own bank account. And I'd go through the class, I'd drive home. Hershey's an hour and a half of a drive, if that. Then I'd drive out the next day and drive back.
Well, that's good for you.
And the cost of taxpayer is zero.
But I, I'm not going to pay because I'm retired. I live on Social Security. You don't.
I know plenty of people that are retired that would drive out there and pay out of their pocket.
Well, good for them.
People at the squad used to do it when they were retired.
I'm done.
Can we get back on point, please?
Yes, please.
Any other questions? Hey, let's do this one by roll call as well, Virginia.
Yes. Ms. Englehard?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
No.
Mr. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. LaHulme?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
And Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Motion passes five to three.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to item 8E, call for a motion to approve reimbursement for Councilwoman Catherine Price Engelhard in the amount of $762.57 for accommodations at Hershey Lodge while attending the PSAB Annual Conference.
So moved. Second.
Any more questions or comments? Roll call, Virginia, please.
Yes. Ms. Engelhard?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
No.
Mr. Van Ness?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. LaHulme?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
And Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Five to three, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 8F, call for a motion to approve participation with Bucks County in the Community Development Block Grant Program.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8G, call for motion to approve, borough manager to approve events or activities to be held in the borough parks, borough property, that are not borough sponsored.
So moved.
Discussion?
Is there a way, because there's lots of times I see things happening, and I can't find anything. Is there any way to include these in the calendar so that the residents can know and council can know what events are happening on what days?
I believe they're already on a calendar on the borough website. We also do, we also place them in council packets, most of them in council packet drops. But I'm almost positive there is a calendar for just the events on the borough website.
Sometimes they're not.
Well, some of these items that we talk about may not be on there. So I think we would have to really decipher, you know, what should we put on, what shouldn't we put on? But we'll work towards that.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8H, consider a motion to advertise proposed amendments to the ordinances of Marsville Borough, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, authorizing events involving the consumption of alcoholic beverages in public parks.
I so move. Second.
Discussion?
Does this call for a motion or consider a motion?
This is, the motion is, the motion is to advertise. And let me just say that, I just wanted to clarify what that means. As, as I mentioned at the April meeting, the Policy and Ordinances Committee had drafted proposed amendments to the Marsville Code as well as a new application form for special events that might involve alcoholic beverages that set forth the conditions under which we might permit alcoholic beverages. In order to adopt those ordinance changes, we need to publicly advertise that in the newspapers. So this resolution is for council to authorize publication of the proposed revisions in the local newspaper so that we would be in position at the June meeting to vote on whether or not to approve those amendments. So tonight, we're just voting on whether to advertise. If we vote no, we don't advertise at all, it's over. If we vote to advertise, we come back in a month with public comments and responses and anything else that the publication brought. And then we vote on final approval or disapproval.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
I think Scott's question was very valid because he said, are we considering? Because we did have, it's, on our paperwork, it says consider. But you did use the terminology call for.
Good, good, fair enough. Yeah, I blew right through that. Sorry about that. Ms. Anker, you want to explain why we put in consider instead of? I wasn't sensitive to that. I'm just.
I just believe that the verbiage was utilized because of the fact that we wanted to make sure that this was considering a motion. So if you are considering the motion, you would call for the motion. So when you make the motion, I would.
Let's just blow right through it and do, and call for the motion. And the motion's already been made and seconded.
Correct.
So we're already through that. And I would just open up for any other questions. Oh, by the way, I had, I had circulated to each of the members on council, and we also put in the weekly drop to council members, the revised forms of these proposed ordinance revisions as well as a revised form of application. And that's what will be advertised, publicly advertised, if we vote this motion. But the council members have already seen what we're proposing in the way of ordinance changes.
Will they be, will we be able to discuss them again in public or not?
Well, the problem is, we're, what we're advertising is what we're, is what we're proposing to adopt or not. If there, if, as a result, if we come back and say, you know, we like the idea, but we have a lot of changes we want to make, then I think we'd have to ask borough's listener whether those changes are, to a degree, that would require rep publication. I don't mean to be doing your job for you, but is that not correct?
No, you did a great job.
Thank you.
If there's substantive changes.
Right.
You may need to re-advertise, meaning if there was just like a typo or something like that.
Well, it wasn't a typo, but there was like the one about having to pour it all out of a container into a cup. That's, that's, like, is wasteful and is not environmentally friendly. You're creating waste for no reason at all. And I went, I looked through most of it and, so let's say that at the Jazz Fest in August, if we, like, if there's nobody, if there's not a vendor there, can someone just show up to the Jazz Fest with a bottle of wine and open it up? Because that's an alcoholic beverage in the park.
No, but it requires that you have to have.
Because everything's on the sale.
Sold by a licensed liquor vendor. So they have to have a Commonwealth liquor license to do that. So that, at the very minimum, so that gives us a little bit of protection right there. So, no, this is not just for the consumption of alcohol. It's for the sale and consumption of alcohol.
So the park effectively becomes a controlled alcohol zone, and you can't, like, if you bring your own in, you can, it'll get confiscated and poured down the drain.
You're still not permitted to bring your own alcohol to public areas, with or without these ordinances.
I figured that, but it was just, I mean, it's, people, I mean, no, we'll cross that bridge when we get to.
Oh, no, but if you, if you have any other substantive, if you have any substantive changes you want to make, this is the time to do it, frankly, before we advertise. Else, we're going to have to re-advertise.
We've got a month, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Paul, I mean, you did present these. We actually had a meeting. I just, you know, I appreciate discussions. I do think that we, you know, we don't have an agenda meetings. So I appreciate that. But at the same time, I think some of these possible changes or questions could have been presented to you or, you know, or Judith, you know, before this evening, I guess. Because we put it on the agenda. So I don't know that I'd like the idea of having to re-advertise and spend that money. So, I mean.
Yeah, that's why we're going to do it. That's why I'd like to clear it up now.
Yes, I agree.
I'm good with that. That was the only thing, was just pouring the stuff. It was kind of redundant, but.
Well, I have some comments.
It's probably the law, so anyway, so.
If there are changes, you could look at it this way, that you could have it pass so you don't have to. And down the line, if you want to make changes to it, just like any.
Changes cost more money. We'll just, we'll.
I understand, but. Before we advertise.
You could make a change now, or like anything else, you can have it pass, see what works, what doesn't work, and make revisions from there. So you could do it either way.
So this motion says for public parks. However, the ordinance is strictly for Williamson Park. So there are many other areas that we have public parks. For instance, down by the dog park, if somebody wanted to have a beer pest down there, this ordinance would not apply to it, and they would not be able to have one. Summer Seed is another one. If they wanted to use Patriots Park and set up tents for a wedding, this ordinance does not apply to it, and so they would not be able to do that. There, the senior center, if they wanted to have an event, I know they can't have it in a county building, but if they wanted to do something in the parking lot, they would not be able to do that. So I just find this kind of quizzical as to why it says public parks, but it's really just Williamson Park and why it wasn't expanded to every other area that is in Marsville.
That's a valid point. Catherine or Nancy, do you have any feel? Did you intend to have it broader than Williamson Park?
When we, thank you. When we discussed it, we wanted just contain right now Williamson Park. Whether we want to expand it, we can do that. But right now, this is, we're kind of working within Williamson Park right now.
That's, that seems, that, that might be, that seems like a prudent approach, especially since we're just starting out with this. But if, and if that's the case, then I would suggest that we revise the wording of the resolution to say.
Any future parks?
To be held, to be held in Williamson Park.
Well, and one of the things that we discussed.
And then it requires, if we want to go broader, we can change it later.
Like Patriots Park doesn't have the parking.
No, we did talk about not, that we didn't really see a benefit to the other places.
Right, exactly.
So, yeah, let's, what, this is a big step we're taking in any case. So it certainly wouldn't hurt to do it on a, on a incremental basis. And if most of it, everything that we foresee in the near future is Williamson Park, let's change the motion to, well, or we actually can keep the motion the way it is, but.
Have to change the wording.
Just, well, we should change, we should change the wording in the resolution, just to say, to approve events or activities to be held in Williamson Park.
Instead of public parks, you're saying?
Instead of borough parks, borough property that are not borough sponsored. I don't even know what that means. That would, I think that was a typo.
I, it might. It may be semantics, but I don't know that it's legally significant because the ordinance then clarifies which areas you cannot do it.
That was going to be my next question.
So it's really semantics more than substance, I think.
Yeah, maybe then we should change the resolution, just say, to be held on borough property. And that's, whether it's borough sponsored or not, it's still subject to.
It's subject to council approval.
Right.
Yes, if.
No, I mean, it's, 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 everything's going to be subject to these restrictions.
Correct, yes.
So I don't understand why we had not borough, that are not borough sponsored in here.
Well, because every section we have, it references Williamson Park, special events held in Williamson Park here, consumed.
No, but my question is, why would we say?
Because that's what you're.
Borough property that are not borough sponsored. This, this, this section, they're not borough sponsored. What does that mean?
Oh, no, that's the.
No, that's the prior one.
The prior one.
That's 8G.
Never mind, I can't read. That explains everything.
No, the, the ordinance itself.
Yeah, this is fine. I think, yeah, we had to say public parks, then we can limit it in the current ordinance to Williamson Park. And then later, we can expand it to broader parks if necessary. I think that, I agree with the solicitor on that. I think that makes sense. It gives us a little bit of leeway, but it narrows it for purposes of the, of the specific law changes.
Mr. Paul?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't want to use the word experiment, but that's kind of what this is. We don't know if this is going to be-
Right.
-helpful, hurtful, something that we will have to abandon shortly thereafter. I mean, I'm hoping not, but-
Correct.
That's not our goal. But this does give us the opportunity to have to, you know, tweak it if we have to.
So if I may ask the solicitor, because we have the heading as we do, alcoholic beverages in public parks, and then in the interior of the ordinance, it notates, or it notes Williamson Park, should it be worded any different on the interior of the, of the ordinance?
I think if it did, it would be fine, but I also think it's fine as is.
As it is.
The general title and then it's more specific.
Because then if you do expand it, then you would have to change it then, and again, as long as you're defining the area that it applies to, I don't see it as, as a, as a significant issue.
Thank you.
I just want to make the comment from my own perspective, that as Chair of the Policy Ordinances Committee, and I worked with the members of the committee, and the chairperson of the Parks and Recreation Committee, to, and Borough Solicitor, to draft ordinances and revisions to the application letter, that we all felt would give us, give the borough the most protection in this experimental big step that we're taking. That doesn't, and I believe, as does the Borough Solicitor, that this is, this really, if we're going to do it, this is the way to do it, this is the best way to do it. That doesn't mean, however, that I'm necessarily advocating for that. I haven't decided, frankly, and I'll decide next month, when I get more input from the public. But I do, I do think that if we're going to do it, this is the way to do it. I think we've tried to do it as prudently as possible, we all agreed to take a very conservative approach in the amounts and the types of liquor that were sold and all that. But even saying that, this is still a major change in public policy in Marsville, and I'm not, and we should all think very long and hard before we do it, because it's going to be hard to put the genie back in the bottle. So that, I think that, I think getting out there, publicizing it, letting everybody see it, is healthy for the community, I think it really helps, so we all know we're all talking about the same thing, and then we can make an educated decision at the June meeting, based on the feedback and based on our own sense of propriety and priority. Anyway-
I'll say.
That's all I have to say. Anything else on this?
No.
Okay, let's vote. Let's do a roll call. Virginia?
Yes. Do you think go first?
Yes.
Mr. Luthen?
Yes.
Did you be there?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
And Mr. Paul.
I'm sorry, I asked for a roll call, yes. Okay, I didn't read the room right. Moving on, item 8I. Call for motion to approve proposal from Snyder Hoffman Associates, Inc., to prepare bid specs to replace the electrical main distribution panel at Borough Hall in the amount of $13,795.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I do have a quick question. Regarding the proposal and the options, we're getting, I'm sorry, the, we're getting all the field survey, the preparation of the advertisement and so forth and so on, and I do appreciate the fact that they're going to be putting in a temporary building generator when they do this, that's great. But I have a question, that it's 8790 to do option one, and then option two is the 8790 plus the replacement of the existing borough panel and feeder. So does the 8790, is that just, is that just a fee for the consultant? And then the actual replacement is only a couple thousand dollars?
No, all of this is just for the consultant architect. What they'll be doing is putting spec, bid specs together, they'll be reviewing the panels and so forth, and whatever is necessary and needed, they'll be doing a review of the building. They've already been out and walked the building with John later, so they've already seen, you know, some of the items that we have, that we need taken care of. But all of this is simply just for the engineer architect, just to do a review and supply us with bid specs to put in the newspaper and put the project out to bid.
Yeah, they do mention the replacement of all electrical panels is beyond the scope of work requested and may be more appropriate for a future building renovation, because some of the panels are located behind the cinder block, I guess. So what is, what is, what is our plan?
So the plan is that once we have them come back in and do a total review, a full building review, we'll know at that point, either way, we know that it all needs to be replaced, we already know that. So that's why I'm asking for the entire architectural review to be completed. We already know that it's all needed, we just don't know how much we can afford to, to repair. That's what we're not sure. So at least by having him do the full total review and bid specs, even if we don't have all the monies this year, it's something that we'll be able to maybe possibly put into our budget for next year, or the year after. So at least we'll have some starting points, whether we're able to do it all or not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Was it, did we make a motion yet, or do?
There's a motion, and second, we're in the discussion phase. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8J. Call for, for a motion after this, potential motion after discussion, regarding zoning hearing notice for Jacquin and Dan Baker, AKA Discovery Day Care of Marsville, at 78 North Pennsylvania Avenue, Marsville, PA, on whether council will or will not direct the solicitor to attend on behalf of the borough.
So moved.
Do you attend or not to attend?
That's right.
How about, how about, how about, the motion will be on council, on-
It says will or will not.
Oh, yeah, whoever wants to make the motion, make the motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we will not direct.
Okay.
The solicitor to attend.
So now the double negative, so now if you're voting, this is like the Proposition 8, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that sounds good to me, so we'll not direct. Discussion? Oh, no, it's been seconded.
Second.
Discussion.
I believe that that last name, a resident texted me and told me it's Jacquin and Dan Decker, not Baker, is that true?
That's, I think it is.
It'd be, Dan Baker's the announcer at the Phillies games, I believe. Virginia must have been thinking about him when she typed this out.
If we could just make that change.
Got it.
You said Decker?
Thank you, residents.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. So solicitor, do not go to the zero, zoning hearing board.
You don't have to tell me twice on that, thank you.
Okay, now, item 8K is, is a little broad, it's a motion to approve Eagle Scout project at Manor Park Senior Center. This is all the information we had going into preparing this agenda on Friday. Just, just minutes ago, our borough manager got a letter, an email from the Eagle Scout candidate himself, describing the project, so we can give you a little bit more color. I'll turn it back, I'll turn it over to Ms. Danko.
Thank you, Council President. So the item of concern is the Senior Center itself, but I will read from the applicant, the Pickleball Court Eagle Scout Project, Ryan, and I'm not sure how to-
Last name?
Yes, S Z Y M E L E W I C Z.
Zipperwich.
Okay, thank you. From BSA Troop 46 in Marsville, he's currently working on his Eagle Scout rank. This email is from him. This summer, I am planning to work on and finish my Eagle Scout project, which is an essential requirement of obtaining my Eagle Scout rank. My proposed Eagle Scout project is to assemble a pickleball and shuffleboard court for the Marsville Senior Center. I think he's mistaken, it's, it's really the Manor Park. This project would meet all the requirements that the BSA has in place for an Eagle Scout project. I have attached a PDF with all the information for my project, such as items to purchase and the cost of these items, how I will get the funds needed to purchase said items, and lay out the courts. I hope this information is helpful, and you will allow me to proceed with my project at the Senior Center, which should be at Manor Park. Please let me know if you have any questions. I've copied my parents on this email as well.
Aww.
That's sweet.
Well, there's nothing more to say if he's copied us. No, so obviously, that leaves a lot of details to be determined. Do we need more information on this, or are we willing to approve this?
I would be willing to approve the concept until we actually get the plan, so, but, you know, it's flooded down there right now, too. I mean, I don't know that it's the-
So he actually has a little sketch with some measurements and so forth, and he does have a material list and so forth, power washing in the area, sealing the asphalt cracks, applying one coat of resurfacer with sand to make it non-slip, applying two coats of court paint in blue, applying white lime paint, he would be putting up a removable pickleball net, four pickleball paddles and balls, a shuffleboard net.
Okay, 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 you're killing us.
Okay, so the concern was that the fundraising would not take place, or may not take place, I'll just say may not take place, with the Senior Center. And at this point, since we've received this from him, I think I would ask that council would consider this, and it's up to him to find the funds to do this, so-
Well, let me ask you this, is this something that, under your newly deputized powers to approve projects as borough manager falls under, and that council need not vote on it? And you could, you would have the power to make that decision, based on getting enough information?
I thought that was events, not projects.
Oh, well, that's how you define events.
Sorry.
Events or activities.
Good try.
Events or activities, right?
Well, she won't have to, she won't have to approve any tournaments down there.
Just saying.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, I'm sorry.
So-
What do you, what?
I'm asking council to please, please consider this, that the funding portion of it would be up to him, obviously. The approval process is what I'm really looking for from council, that he may do this at that park, at Manor Park.
So if, if he can't get everything done, or he hits a roadblock, then it won't happen.
Correct.
And we're not responsible if he builds it, and it's underwater, and they can't play pickleball. They can't sue council, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just kidding, okay.
That's good to hear, because when I talked to the boy scout, they hadn't gotten the proposal yet, so I guess that kind of got him fired up, so-
Yeah, twelve hours ago, there was no way we were going to do this, we had nothing, we realized.
Right.
It was all, it was all like Senior Center, but this is, he's at least tried to give us detail, it is more detailed than I can possibly digest.
Yes, and I will email him back clarifying that it, that it is Manor Park, not the Senior Center, and I will also put this information in the Friday drop for council to see, so all of you will have all of this.
And whatever funding he needs will come from other sources than the borough.
Yes, correct.
I so moved that we consider-
Do we know what his deadline is for this project?
Could you repeat yourself?
July.
Ju-
I don't want to scream at the board.
July.
He was slated to complete his project by July, so the time is on the essence of this borough.
Okay.
It, he-
Okay, let's vote.
Because I would, I would, I would, I, I think this is a wonderful, wonderful idea, I have no problem voting yes for this. The only problem there is, is, I mean, it's like, he's going to power wash it, he's going to paint it, and did he say shuffleball?
Scott, it's not for us to determine how he does, whether, whether this makes any sense. We're not passing on the, on the validity or wisdom of this project, we're just letting him do the project. If he wants to do it, if he needs this to be Eagle Scout, if he's only got ten months, let's, let him, let's, let's give him a hand.
Yeah, I, no, I agree.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have to change it, right?
So you have a motion?
Okay.
Motion, Ms. Catherine.
I'll second.
Discussion, any further discussion?
No.
Are we, yes, I have a question. We said something about the, the funding, do we need to put that in the motion?
No.
No? Okay.
Definitely not. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. Someone can figure out what it is, okay. Item 8L. Call for motion to execute the DCNR agreement for Bridge Street project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstention, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Item 8M. Call for motion to approve DCNR Williamson Park Master Planning Grant return.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Item 8N. Call for motion for CDBG Manor Park grant application with Gilmore Associates assistance.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Item 8O. Call for motion to issue an intent-to-award letter to ProCom Roofing and Construction Services for the base bid and all alternates in the amount of $232,250 for the roof replacement project at Borough Hall.
So moved.
Okay, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So before we pass, I should have said during the discussion portion, I just wanted to point out and reiterate what, what Judith said in her report, this is big. This is, I think, the most important stuff that we've done in the three years I've been on council, is fixing the roof, the main sewer line into the building, and the electric panel, because all the other stuff we do isn't going to matter if the people don't have a safe, secure, healthy place to work from. So I applaud Judith for keeping her head down and just pushing through and getting this stuff done, not withstanding all the other distractions, and the end is in sight. At least, you know, so before we crumble, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to fix this thing, so I appreciate that. And I personally have been on, on Judith's case for the past year, so I appreciate the fact that, that she's gotten this far, and hopefully we'll get this thing finished up as quickly as possible.
If I can comment, thank you, I'm glad we're moving forward, and thank you for ARPA money.
Yes, thank you for ARPA money. And you're welcome. I'm so excited.
Item 8P. Call for motion to approve two movie nights to be held at Williamson Park, sponsored by the Police Department. Dates are Thursday, June 8, and Thursday, June 22.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8Q. Call for motion to approve a mega sports camp to be held at Williamson Park, sponsored by Compass Fellowship. Dates are Monday, July 10, through Saturday, July 15.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Is it all day? What are the hours that are down there?
It goes till, I think, about two, three o'clock.
What is Compass Fellowship?
From what time?
It's, it's because we're having the-
Oh, okay, it's a former, a former Baptist church. Their name has changed.
My old people. Great. Any other discussion?
Does this interfere with the Little League at all?
No, it should not.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, I'm skipping to the bottom here, under orders from Borough Manager. We still have an opening on the zoning hearing board for one three-year alternate appointment for the remainder of the term that expires on January 8, 2024. So if anyone's interested in being alternate for the zoning hearing board, please drop an email or a letter to the Borough Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Paul, for that, because it's imperative that we have someone as the alternate with vacations and so forth. If we have a zoning hearing that comes up, we must have a meeting, because we are, we have to abide by the process and the timing that's required by us to do so. So it's imperative that we do have an alternate. So if anyone is interested, please feel free to just send me an email, send me, you know, a resume, send me anything that you have that you can, you know, would like to send in reference to being interested to be on this board. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we don't have many meetings of that board, but when they are, they're time-sensitive.
Correct, thank you very much.
Okay, other business?
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a statement, please. I'd like to just recognize June as Pride Month. It is a month in which lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer people, and allies, come together in various celebrations and are to honor the 1969 Stonewall riots and the efforts to achieve equal justice and equal opportunity for all, and to commit to supporting a safe community and denounce all forms of prejudice and hate. Where in 2020, the Supreme Court declared the Civil Rights Act of 1964 to protect the LGBTQ workers. And then we recognize the contributions that they make to our community in Marsville without discrimination and affirmation of equal rights. And we encourage everyone to reflect on ways we can all live together, work together, with a commitment to show respect and dignity for all. And the Borough Marshal does, please, recognize that the month of June 2023 is Pride Month. And we embrace our town's diversity and affirm our support for the LGBTQ residents, and in particular, our youth. Thank you for letting me make this statement.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sherlock. I join you in celebrating the LGBTQ community this month.
Mr. Paul, ma'am?
The month of June.
Ma'am? Thank you. Yes, Ed, me as well. And I just wanted to say real quick, for a lot of people may not know, this is a small fact, that the Stonewall references that were just referenced in that statement, the owner of that place is actually a lifetime Marsville resident. And so it's a very, very important topic, and he loves this town very much. So thank you for all your kind words, Nancy.
Sure.
Any other business? Borough officials. I'm sorry, Scott, you got some? Borough officials.
Switch gets pushed down further and further. Judith used the phrase problematic properties earlier tonight. That is a problematic property. This is the 300th block of Prospect.
Yeah.
I walked past this campaigning probably 100 times. The house next door to it would be here at 331 is a really nice house. That one has been completely rebuilt. It was in a shambles. And I knew the family that lived there and got ahold of one of the family members in Montana. And I said, "Come back to Marsville and get your uncle and clean up your pigsty." So that got taken care of. Unfortunately, this one is still here. Now, I think the number is 327. I'm sure there's a number on it, probably underneath that bush. I saw a raccoon in the yard when I was door knocking. I did not see any rats, raccoons. We got to be able to do something about this. I know it's the RDA and this and that. When I was campaigning, people were asking me about the Stockton Building. "Scott, what's up with that building down on the corner?" And I said, "RDA. It's a black hole. And this house is in the black hole of the RDA, too. We have to be able to do something to this." I would, if I lived next door to this, I probably would have set it on fire. While we're on Prospect, a couple of years ago, we had our little vacant lot down there. I don't know if you're familiar with the vacant lot or not. This was before your time. Scott Mitchell was here. There is an area that I believe was supposed to be a thoroughfare. If you drive up Mercer, you come to Prospect, it's a dead end, like a T-intersection. And I believe it was supposed to go all the way through to Palmer, but it never happened. And I think there's a house on Palmer, so it's not going to happen. And I don't know what we did with the property. I think we asked the people if they wanted it, they could have it, whatever. Anyway, the grass isn't being cut there. And the problem was to give it to the residents there, because Public Works has enough on their hands. And that's a piece of land that, there's two houses with a vacant lot. Somebody take it, you can have it. Just cut the grass. It's not being cut. It's not a dig at all on Public Works, because it's probably not on their schedule, because I think we relieved them of that. And that's right up the street from this beautiful house.
Scott, to comment on the Prospect Avenue houses, I do know that last week or this week, and I think, John, you can help me out here. John, later, can you hear me? I know that I had directed Public Works to take care of one of the blighted properties, and I know Public Works did cut the grass. Some of the others, citations had gone out to them, and from my understanding, they were cut. I don't know exact addresses.
No.
I wouldn't even know where to start with this.
So that.
Yeah, it's not even grass. It's like trees.
I think it's 327.
327.
Yeah, that's not on our list at all. That's not, that's been handled. I don't even know who handles that. Who's handling that?
Supposedly, they pay their taxes every once in a while, and they're like up to date or whatever.
I thought it was on the, it's on the blighted property.
That's what we were just talking. 327 Prospect I built. If it's 327, it's on the blighted list and it's in RDA's.
So we need to tell the RDA to come and clear it. But I thank you for bringing that up, Scott. That, both that and the other location on Prospect were both on my.
Next door, the guy just bought that, a young kid. Moved into the borough.
His name is Ryan. Yes, I spoke to him, and I spoke to Daniel on the other side. And the problem is.
Daniel, I think.
Correct. The problem is, the former owner said, "I'll cut the whole thing," because Daniel didn't want to do a thing about it. So the gentleman that lives south of that lot, he's been, no one told, he just bought the place, and no one told him about the lot.
The house that just got refurbished, where Rupert lived.
Right, and the problem is, it's not on his deed. How do we make somebody cut the grass that's not on their deed? I really want to know, because that's what happened when we discussed this last year.
Who needs to cut the grass?
We cut it for 40 years. We cut it for 40 years, and then two years ago, Scott Mitchell said, "That's it, we're not going to cut it anymore." We brought the attorneys in. They said, "Okay, well, they're going to have to figure it out on their own."
Oh, you're, oh, we're talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the lot, the vacant lot.
Okay.
So I had received an email from Nancy regarding this, and I know you're bringing this up, too. I had asked everyone to please have the homeowners contact me.
Yes, he said he will.
Yes, and Nancy had said she would do that. So if we can have that take place, because this is an area that if the new owners are interested in acquiring the property, the borough could entertain the idea of vacating that area. And, but.
That's my question. If we don't own it, if you're saying we don't own it, how do we sell it to them?
Well, that's just it. If we own it, we can entertain the idea of vacating it. I don't know if we own it or who owns it.
Right, but it's not on either of their deeds, and which is why there was this discussion.
John, had you looked that up for me? I'm not sure if you looked this one up for me.
Yeah, I did look that up, I can look that up.
Yes, we'll look it up. We have ways of going on the county website.
The county website shows that it's not, it belongs to us, not them.
So if the county website shows that it's us, then we own it. So council could, if the.
I think Ryan said he'd entertain the purchasing it.
Sure, so council has the idea, or, I'm sorry, the ability to vacate the property. What I usually tell people to do is write a letter to council with a request. I usually inform Borough Council to inform the person interested to tell them that, as long as they're interested in this, that they would need to do a survey of the property, and they would also need to do, take care of the deed of dedication. Now, normally, what happens is the person to the right would get half of it, and the person to the left would get half. But if the person to the right is not interested, I do believe that I'm going to pass this to the solicitor at this point. I believe that that person can say they're not interested in it, in writing, and that a survey can be done, and that a deed could be put together, and a deed of dedication could happen at the county. Now, what I'm used to is that the person interested in acquiring that property on the left, they would pay for all of this and work with the borough to make this happen. And that the borough can either charge for the lot, or they can say, "We'll give this to you for a dollar as long as you pay for the survey, all of the things that need to take place." So this is put onto your deed at this point, and the borough's vacation of that property.
I believe that the attorney two years ago sent the letters to both owners. I mean, not Ryan, but the previous owner. So all parties were notified. I believe one owner said yes, and the other one said no to the property. But you should have copies of the letters downstairs somewhere about what transpired in the two years ago.
We do, but it's a new owner that had no knowledge.
I understand that, but he could be sent the same letter.
I'm not aware of the letters, so.
There were some letters.
Was it the current solicitors?
Yes, yes, it was.
Did you look into that? Thank you, okay.
I'm still not understanding how we were able to insist that they cut the grass when they didn't own it, so.
I don't know who insisted that they cut the grass, but I think they could, that we can say, if you're interested in cutting the grass and you want to, you know, have it cut, if not, the borough is not interested in cutting it, and we're going to let it grow. The borough has their prerogative to do so. You know, but they can certainly cut it if they would like to, because that's what they would like. You know, they don't want it to be grown in. I think the borough has every right to allow that. They couldn't build on it or anything of that nature.
It's pretty swampy.
Yeah, but they could at least, you know, if they wanted to take care of it, they could.
I think that's great, and I think it can be worked out. But I have a question. If he agrees, the owners agree to paying for the deed transfer and so forth and so on, and the survey, would we at least be willing to cut the grass once? It is two and a half feet high. A regular lawnmower is not going to do that. I'm just saying, kind of share, share it.
At this point, how many years has it been that we've maintained it? Several years?
Forty.
That we've maintained it?
Yes, that we've done anything.
That I haven't done anything?
Yes.
It's been two years.
Yeah, so I'm a little concerned to say yes to anything like that after two years. I have no idea what's in there and what we would be up against, so I.
They maintained it before, whoever had the property before, they weren't cutting it. The borough wasn't cutting it. We haven't.
For two years. Since the new owner came along, they stopped cutting it.
So you got about a foot and a half of grass. That's where it is right now, give or take. That's about how high it is.
But the fact that we maintained it for 40 years, I think, has to be a factor that we can think about in our future moves. But we'll see when he calls you and this proposal with the attorney's approval and whatever directions, and we'll see what happens.
Certainly, we can, and John and I can talk about it.
But what is our process for these blighted properties? I mean, 327 is a nightmare. And there was another one on Rosemar. The man was so happy, he had tears in his eyes when you guys cut that. Like, what is the process? We can't allow residents to just have four feet of grass next to them.
I think that's Code is the one who takes care of that. We don't, there's no list to say. Well, now, I think we've talked about starting to just maintain those throughout the year. The only problem with that is, what if somebody decides they're going to cut it? Or, you know, like, it's, it's hard for me. Code is the one that has to tell me whether we're cutting it or not cutting it. Unless you want to say we put it on a monthly schedule or a bi-weekly schedule, whatever it is. I mean, that's.
Well, how do you?
Works every time for it.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And we never get the money for it. That's, we'll never see that money.
We put the lien on the property.
There's ways around that, but again.
That's more than taking a lawnmower. Like, you need, you'll need like three guys all day to clean that up.
That, the other problem, I wouldn't even, RDA, if that's theirs, then they need to bring somebody in to clean that up. The other one, we get it, as long as we're maintaining them on a normal basis, yeah, we can cut it. But I mean, it has to be on a schedule, and I would, I would prefer it to be on a schedule.
But the problem is that we have these blighted properties, and they are allowed to get to the point where they're a nightmare. So what are we going to do to be proactive rather than reactive? Somebody needs to take a ride and look at, get a list of these properties, take a ride, look at them, and then get on the people that need to cut it, whether it's the RDA or the borough.
Well, that would be, that would be Code that does that. And as far as Public Works, if, again, it's us going on somebody else's property. It's not just, you know, us going and cutting the grass. We could, 20 people could decide they're not going to cut the grass, and Public Works would be doing 20.
But the two properties I'm talking about are blighted. So the RDA owns them. So what is our, we need to figure out a process, Judith.
Which two properties are they?
One was 327 Prospect.
Right, right. Rosemar. Well, we did already cut theirs back in the fall, right? So is it high again? Is that what you're saying?
They just cut it.
We just cut it.
Yeah, and it's, to Helen's point, if we're going to cut Rosemar, we should have been cutting Prospect all along as well.
Well, when the RDA takes over a property, what takes place is, if the borough is no longer maintaining it, the RDA will sometimes hire a company to take care of that when it gets so high. And then that'll come off of the sale of the property once that takes place. So when the property is in limbo, and right now, the property is in limbo, we say that RDA has it. We did blight it, but we're in, the property is in limbo of being blighted legally.
Right, so they haven't taken it out yet.
Exactly, so when a property hits something of this nature, it's in limbo. So when it's in limbo, that's why Code has no one to send a notice to. And then at that point, we're waiting for the RDA to give us the okay to do so. So sometimes, depending on the time of the year, yes, we do end up with this. So we do have a process. It's not the best process, because of the fact that each time a property has something of this nature, it depends on the nature of the property. If it's a blighted property, it depends on what stage it's in. If it's not, if it's blighted and just by resolution from the vacant property committee, and we haven't gotten it to the RDA yet, it's still in limbo. So Code is still trying to send notice of violations to whomever they can, trying to get it rectified. So we've been going through that process on some of these properties. So we always send it to code first to try to get these things rectified through code, if they can get to anyone. We've even gone to some of the banks that own the properties. We've tried all sorts of avenues. When we run out of avenues, that is when the Public Works is notified to try to, to do something about this. And that is the process that we should be taking. We should always be taking that process, because if we're going to blight it, we have to have all of this documentation take place. So unfortunately, it's not something anyone would want to live next to, but when we're doing the blighted process, we have to follow through on all of this. So we have record that this is what we did. We did number one. We did number two.
I do appreciate the explanation.
Because, because there's two, those two properties we're speaking of were blighted last year. So this fell through the cracks where these two properties were not taken care of.
But again, they were blighted at the blight, they were blighted at the vacant property committee meeting. But it's, it takes time to go from there to legal.
If RDA is responsible, then can we hire a company and they reimburse us if...
But they didn't take ownership, you just said, right?
I mean, the problem is, as long as we're, as long as it's in limbo, we're responsible for it. And it, it doesn't seem that it makes, that we should be...
Correct.
Subsidizing, taking care of the property when it's ultimately going to be sold by RDA.
But what happens is, we do work with the RDA. If they're going to hire someone, what happens is, it gets subsidized, but when the sale of the property takes place, then those monies come back out of there. That's what happens.
Yeah, but in the meantime, nothing's happening.
Correct. It's, it's...
Right now, nothing's happening.
Right, and, and that's what I'm saying. We're going through the processes.
Are we not allowed to go on the property since it's in limbo? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's not that we're not allowed, it's, it's not something that we like to do, because we're trying to get, we send out the NOV letters. We're sending out the letters, we're going through the process of the blighted process, not just the blighted portion that you're understanding from, from the vacant property committee.
The legal portion.
But the legal version, once it's hitting the RDA. And, and the RDA relies on us too, to look at these properties. It's a twofold thing.
Well, maybe a phone call to them. I mean, could that hurt?
I'm sorry?
Could that hurt, a phone call to them and, and have them drive by or a picture or something? I, you know...
And I, and I, I believe that it's a twofold responsibility, the borough and the RDA. And so, yes, John and I did have a discussion on what could we do to make processes better here for the borough and the residents that live around these areas with these blighted properties, or just high grass properties. And it's a meeting that we're going to have to get together with code and John and myself, and come up with a, a better way to tackle these things. Because how we've been dealing with it is on a complaint basis. If a complaint comes in, we're reactive. That's how we've been dealing with them. And, and there should be a better way. Helen is right, there should be a better way.